Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Board Meeting. If we could please first stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay, first we'll go to correspondence, which we got quite a bit of. Anything anybody wants to discuss in there?
Not here.
I think we got a very interesting letter from the New York City Watershed Inspector General with reference to the Toll Brothers' application for rezoning, which raises interesting questions of considering a rezoning by the Town Board and the environmental impacts on that without necessarily considering the underlying project. And I think that this kind of question comes up in several things that we've got before us and the Town Board has before them. So I think it just raises some interesting questions about how you handle the environmental review on that to make sure that it's done properly. I also noticed that there is a response from Toll Brothers challenging some of their assumptions that it's being, you know, split up and not done as a whole. But it's an interesting, interesting letter, I thought.
Quite lengthy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
All right, also do want to note that we did get a draft memo from the, that we're working on from this board to the Town Board in reference to the Lake Osceola Rezone. There's twelve bullets in the memo. Do you want me to go through them?
I don't think so. We have read it, right?
I've read it.
You read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, what's gonna happen next with that?
I guess we're gonna finalize it and put it into a final form.
Okay. Is there a public hearing on, on that yet?
No.
No, okay.
Okay, I'll go get my updated. Okay, next we have the meeting minutes of June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Any corrections, changes, additions?
No.
Do I motion to approve the meeting minutes of June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move into the regular portion of the meeting. First on the agenda, we have Colangelo Subdivision. There is a correction to the agenda. It's the, asking for the second ninety-day time extension.
Yeah.
Location is eighteen oh five Jacob Road.
Good evening, Joseph Rina, Principal Site Design Consultants. I think the, a letter from Geraldine Tortorella, the attorney from Hockman, Tortorella, and Weckstein is self-explanatory. And they're, we're asking for a ninety-day extension.
Any issues from the board?
None.
John?
Doing two?
Two ninety days, yes.
You're doing one retro, two.
Any issues?
No.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right then, so we've got two ninety-day time extensions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have Chipoli. This is Lowe's Pad C. This is a decision statement. Location's three one eight zero Cromwell Road, Route two oh two.
Joseph Rina, Principal Site Design Consultants. The site plans have been amended to reflect some ASBIL conditions, specifically a riprap that was installed as part of some remediation of slope disturbance that was occurring from runoff coming off the Conic Parkway. There was a permit that was given by the DOT for some of this work since it's on their property. And the site plans now reflect what was installed. That's it.
All right, we've seen this, we've talked about it, we've all been on site. Beautiful.
It needed it. Way to tell you.
Beautiful job they did there.
What's that? To be honest with you, I didn't go and take a look today after that rain we had over the weekend, so, or this afternoon, but I'm hoping we're okay. I didn't, I didn't get, I didn't get any reports otherwise.
I mean, every rain we're getting is just unbelievable.
Well, the, what's, what's happening there is the water that comes down the exit ramp, right at the, right at the foot of that is an ADA ramp, and it acts like a funnel. And the water just goes right, shoots right up that ADA ramp and right through the, through the site. And DOT knows about it, but they, they don't care, I guess. I don't know. They basically put it on us to deal with.
It's not that they don't care, it's just not gonna do anything about it.
Right, well, yeah.
Is there something that could be put on the backside of the, of that walk where, where that ADA ramp comes up?
We looked at that, and it really isn't because the way the grade just drops off from there.
It's so severe, you can't stop it.
Yeah, there's no way to, to catch the water or trap the water without, you know, putting a catch basin right in front of the ramp, or right above the ramp, but that's, that, that's a major project.
Right. That being said, we have a resolution approving amended site plan for Lowe's Shopping Center, Pad C, Chipoli. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have the Underhill Farm. This is a decision statement of site plan amendments and a decision statement of the mansion renovation.
Good evening, Joseph Rina, Site Design Consultants. I'm here with Joe Thompson. I'm the architect for the project also. We received a copy of the resolutions. And there's nothing specific that, that we have to add about the renovation.
Not necessarily. We've had a positive meeting with the BACA. Project was generally well-received. Had some discussion about ramp placement, which we're exploring options right now with the Planning Department. But otherwise, had a very positive first meeting.
Were you talking about a, a ramp at grade or a handicap ramp?
It's a handicap ramp to enter the new seating area and coffee shop, general store.
So it's a ramp to bring you from grade up to the?
Exactly. Approximately two-foot differential.
Any concerns, questions, or comments on either resolution from the board?
Not here.
No.
John?
Nope.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that being said.
Motion.
Well, first we have the resolution approving an amended site plan for Underhill Farms. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then secondly, we have a resolution approving the Underhill Mansion renovation plan for Underhill Farms. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to go into the work session?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. First on the agenda, we have Nathan's, Mr. Softy. This is a discussion of a special use permit. Location's nineteen ninety Commerce Street.
Times I wish we were a food approval agency too, we could have samples, you know?
Right, right.
That's because you skinny.
Okay.
So, as you know, we discussed this at the last meeting. I hope you all saw the letter that I directed to the board clarifying my statement that a building permit was issued, which when it was not, when I, so the, the contractor on this, you know, kinda led the applicant to believe that everything was in order when it was not. I double-checked with the building inspector. He had not issued a building permit. So I issued that clarification. In the meantime, we prepared a site plan. We did an ASBIL construction drawing of the actual retaining walls and the patio to the best of our ability as to what was visibly accessible and what we could check and verified some of the measurements and, and whatnot. So that, that we've submitted also. And we also submitted that to the Building Department today simultaneously with when we delivered that to, to Planning Department. And to remind the board that the billing permit cannot be issued until the site plan is approved.
Testing. Put it in two.
What's that?
Two locations. Trying to keep me on my toes. Oh, it's Mr. Softy.
So does this list all the materials, the underlying, how much, how much material was used? Accurate dimensions of the project itself?
Yes. So, to answer your question on dimensions, yes, that we, we field-measured the entire construction. As far as materials go, what was visible to us, we of course could not see. What we could not see, we did have availability of some, some photographs. We verified the gravel, the thickness of the gravel and that the fact that there was a, a geotextile underlayment under the gravel, so we were able to verify that. Other than that, there really wasn't much more we could certify to because we didn't see it fully installed.
We don't have dimensions or depth on the sleepers that are in, holding the walls, either front and back or side?
We, we, we do on the upper wall. We, I do not have that, the, the depth of the dead men on the bottom wall. But we do on the, on the upper wall.
Do understand how unusual this is that we're looking at a project that we're looking at segments.
Yeah, I, I get it, yep.
But we should make our strike.
Rich, I, I have a question. The, it looks like we've closed the gap between no information and fairly substantial information, but in terms of documenting it, should we not require that a revised site plan for this property now be amended and, or created to show the current conditions, not just have a, an additional drawing that's referenced? In other words, if somebody pulls a site plan on this property, they're gonna see what's there now, not what's, not what the change was. So shouldn't there be an amended site plan? And I don't know.
I don't know about that.
I don't know legally if we're required to, but practically, I think.
Well, would you need an amended site plan if you just did it in a?
In the appropriate way.
Yeah, but let's say you did a garbage enclosure. You would need that on the site plan too?
Theoretically, my answer would be yes, but I'm not sure of my answer.
Yeah, well, that's.
So that's why I'm saying.
We don't want him to go through the trouble, the apple going to go to trouble if we don't need it.
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not saying that we need it for the information purposes. I'm saying do we, are, are we required to require it? That's my question.
John?
Well, these, this partial plan will become part of the record, and so will be in the file with the with the latest approved, and this will be part of it as a special permit, so. You know, for us, it suffices as an approval of this amenity along with the ability to use it for seating.
John, doesn't this bring the possibility of coming back and biting us if something fails there?
That's a building permit.
Well.
I guess my question is, it, does it become legal document? In other words, what Joe has created is a record of what he feels is out there, and he's putting his name on that. But if, is, does that become a filed record for the property? I mean, we have the information, that's what I've said, and, and I'm comfortable with that. But I don't know if we're required to, to create a legal document that incorporates that change. Or this is just an addendum to it. I don't, I don't know.
Well, this is a special use, so special uses could ultimately go away.
It could.
So it's kind of like an addition to the site plan?
We, we always, we always consider them as additions to the site plan. So, for instance, with daycare, we don't ask that the original site plan be brought forth and then modified. There's new plans that are drawn, and it supplements the original approval and modifies it. So, not always will there be a, a full site plan that has a change on it, as in this case. It, it's a partial plan that will go into the record with your legal document approval and become part of our record as what's available to the owners of, on the site to use.
So, in my opinion, I think we'd be better off being an addition to the folder rather than a permanent change on the site, but because it could ultimately.
No, no, I understand. I just don't, I'm not suggesting that we do it. I'm, I'm asking the question, are, are we required to, to make that happen?
If it was an addition to the building or a loading dock?
For a special use permit, you're saying you're comfortable?
I would think, yeah.
We haven't done it before in special uses, right?
Yeah, yeah. Because it's something that could go away.
Yeah, for a finite period of time.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I think we're confronted with these, unfortunately, a few projects recently that have gone ahead without any kind of approvals, and then we're.
That's true.
You know, and I think that needs to be stated for the record that, you know, although I think everybody likes the way it turned out. It didn't follow the right process, and we wanna make sure that the general public is aware that, you know, the town does expect everything to follow process and procedure. That being said, any comments, concerns?
None here.
No.
John?
No, no further concerns on this one.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a resolution in front of us approving a special use permit for outdoor seat. Oh, do I have to go into a?
Yes.
Okay, I call it myself.
No.
See that? Do I have a motion to go into a special session?
Motion.
Therapy helps, right?
Yes, is there a second? All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, in front of us, we have a resolution approving a special use permit for outdoor seating at Nathan's and Mr. Softy. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Do I motion to close the special session?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have the T-Town Campus renovation. This is a discussion of the site plan. Location, I think everybody probably knows, sixteen hundred Spring Valley Road.
I will recuse myself from this discussion.
I understand. We did have the opportunity to take a, a site visit one morning on the campus. It is absolutely beautiful. And when we were out on the, the walk, T-Town had planted a turtle crossing the path that we stumbled upon. We know you really didn't plant it, but it's quite nice.
I've been there a couple times.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My connection went away, so. My name is Andrew Tong from DTS Providence. Here this evening with Mark Gratz, my associate from my office, and Alan Sorkin, Managing Director of T-Town. We're here tonight to provide an update to our application and plan and, and to answer any questions that the board may have subsequent to the, to the site walk. As you mentioned, we had the site walk since last we were here in May. We have also, later on in June, T-Town, as is it, as is its habit, had a town hall Zoom with neighbors and other interested parties to describe the proposed project so they would be aware of what was coming before this board. And then on July third, we filed the package including applications for site plans, special permit, wetlands, tree, and stormwater management permits. That package included a set of town forms, a long-form EAF, a letter with exhibits, which I will show shortly, or which Ian may help me if we can't get it up, as well as eleven-by-seventeen architectural plans and elevations for the renovation of the Nature Center and the new education building. And a series of supplemental EAF studies, including stormwater management, traffic and parking, wetlands, and wetland buffer assessment, a biodiversity assessment, and also a tree inventory and a mitigation plan. But I think that may have filled up your book. I apologize for that. And there was also a set of full-size drawings prepared by the site plan team for the project. Just a recap of T-Town's objectives and the elements of this plan. The primary objectives were, one, to maintain the health of the preserve. As you know, there's approximately one thousand acres within the preserve, of which our application is for five parcels containing approximately one hundred and thirty-two acres. And that's directly adjoining the Nature Center and Carriage House, both north, the north side and the south side of Spring Valley Road. The second is to strengthen, the second objective is to strengthen T-Town's longstanding commitment to environmental education. You'll hear a little bit about that. Third is to invest in upgrading its aging infrastructure and buildings. And fourth, to create a more safe and accessible campus. So those four objectives kind of guided our project team in proposing this set of integrated improvements. Those improvements include. Okay, thank you. So this is a rendered plan of the area immediately around the Nature Center. This is Spring Valley Road, and in white, the Nature Center or a visitor center, as it has been called as well. And the Carriage House is the building immediately adjacent to that. And to the north is most of the proposed improvements. To the south are some parking and other improvements I'll describe shortly. The Nature Center. There will be no changes to the footprint of either the Nature Center or the Carriage House. However, the Nature Center will undergo a complete interior renovation to better use those spaces for the various functions that occur there. Both education, exhibit, visitor greeting, staff functions, and gathering. There would also be extensive facade renovations. If you've been to the Nature Center and to the area recently, it is looking a little bit in need of repair. So that facade will be redone. Here is a view of that building. The Tudor style will be retained. There will be one additional dormer added to better use one of the upper-story rooms. And the entire facade will be refurbished. This is a view from in, inside the campus. The, going back to the site plan, if you're familiar with the area, to the north of the Nature Center, there is what's called the Red Barn in the center of this image. Which is used for maintenance purposes, and there's a small parking lot around that barn. Being in the core of the campus, it doesn't really serve a function in terms of environmental education or visitor focus. And so it's been decided to take that function and to move it to the south side of the road to the former tennis court that was adjoining the craft, the former Croft residence. And in its place will be the construction of a new education building. This education building will allow for dedicated space for teachers and educators to set up essentially four classroom spaces to serve the classes that occur now during the school year for student groups that come to visit, and also for summer camp, which I think is about to start or is ongoing. In its second week now. Up to now, the folks at T-Town have managed to share the space within the visitor center with not only the visitors that come every day, but also the student activities. Creating this new education center, one-story building in the center of the space will allow for a much better use of that space and, and much easier programming for that purpose. It will also provide more room in the visitor center, in the Nature Center rather, for exhibits and for visitor-focused activities. This will be a one-story building with a green roof that will allow outdoor education on top of the building as well as within the building. And there were three views of the building that were included with the letter. This is a view of the building sheathed in a natural wood finish as viewed from the Nature Center. The next view is then a view from what is the new bus drop-off to its north, which I will describe shortly. And then the third view is an aerial view looking on the top of the green roof. So this will be accessible via stairs and ramps from outside the building. So students can not only have classes inside, they can go outside upstairs to the green roof and have a canopy view of the wooded area beyond. T-Town's education program focuses not only on indoor education, but also outdoor education. So this new facility will serve both purposes. Other uses surrounding the education building, site improvements that will reinforce its use. A new, to the north, a new bus drop-off is proposed with, via an access road from the Blinn Road parking lot. This will serve a number of functions. Right now, buses that come to the site enter into the main parking lot that's just west of the Nature Center. And they circle around in a fairly tight space, and they might park there, they might park across the street. So that bus drop-off also currently happens in the same, same space as visitor parking and entry into the preserve. By separating the two, by bringing the bus drop-off north to the north side of the education building, it's served, it's, I, I think it's not the greatest metaphor here. I won't say it kills two birds with one stone, but it addresses two issues at the same time. Not only is the circulation, the vehicular circulation improved by removing that conflict, but it brings the students much closer to where they want to go at the, at the new Nature Center. Adjoining that, the adjoining the Nature Center where the parking lot is today, that parking lot will be removed to better create a more natural surround around the Nature Center, and the parking will be relocated to the south side of Spring Valley Road as an extension of the existing south gravel lot. So be, there'll be basically a double-sized gravel lot on that side, which also. So there'll be basically a double-sized gravel lot on that side, which also helps to reduce circulation conflicts at Spring Valley, because now you'll only be turning southward into the parking lot, rather than be turning either northward or southward. So this combination of relocation of activities, rejiggering of circulation and parking will all serve to create what we believe to be a much better visitor and student experience at the site. Also, site improvements include new nature play areas, walkways that will now be accessible through much of the site, including around the raptor loop that provides a number of animal enclosures that's already there today, but that will also be improved. And so the combination of all these elements, we believe, will serve to improve the facility for all visitors and for staff, and take us into the next decades of T-Town. That's a summary of where we are and what we've submitted, and be happy to answer any additional questions that you do have.
I think when we were on the site walk, the one question, and I think it was answered on-site, but I think it would be appropriate to also talk about it here, where the site distances into the new loop drop-off
Yes.
From Blynn, and also from Spring Valley into this, where you have the existing lot, and the new proposed lot.
We actually did, I neglected to mention, a member, Phelan, during the walk asked about the access road. Let me just bring it down here. It's easier with my fingers. So the access road comes off of, just past the entry to the Blynn parking lot, goes up the hill and around to the, to the roundabout, and the drop-off is at the end of the roundabout near the new education building. A member, Phelan, asked that perhaps, might there be benefit to having a new curb cut on Blynn Road a little bit to the south that would bring you more directly up to the alignment of this new access road? We took a look at that and did a couple sketches, which have not yet been, just recently finished, and which we will submit to the board. But the sketch... Yeah. So this is the alternate access road that enters Blynn to the south of the current throat that goes to the parking lot, and heads up the hill to the same roundabout. The challenge we have is that there is about a 30-foot plus or minus grade change between Blynn Road and the site of the education building. So that the original design of the profile, here we have the comparison of the originally proposed plan on top and this alternate plan on the bottom. The length of that road and the location of that road takes advantage of the fact that the parking lot, the Blynn parking lot rises up from Blynn Road, such that we take advantage of that additional rise to get to a point where we can then, by running up the hill at 10%, we can have a maximum 10% grade to get to the top of the hill. Let me zoom in a little bit here. So you can see on the left in this top profile, we meet Blynn Road, meet the Blynn parking lot at 3:40. We go up the hill to the beginning of the turnaround, which is about at 3:70. That's a distance of about 340 feet, and we can do that using a 10% maximum slope with a transition to top and bottom. If we start alternatively at Blynn Road, we start a little, actually a little lower at Blynn Road, and because we're closer to where the drop-off occurs, we have a shorter run within which we need to get about four feet more change in grade than previously. To do that, we would be over almost 15% maximum slope. So although it would be a little shorter, it would be somewhat steeper, and we don't recommend that we go with a bus, primarily for bus route, that we'd go to that 15% versus a 10%.
Yeah. Excuse me, I appreciate your responding to the comments I made in the field. The site distance on Blynn Road was part of what I had said, but the strength of my suggestion was to segregate the bus traffic from the pedestrian, or what will become pedestrian traffic. In other words, the, the parking that's existing now will be continued, but you're encouraging all the bus traffic to enter in the same opening that regular passenger vehicles will, right at a point where there's about six or seven parking spaces. So what I was hoping to do was either segregate one entrance from the other, or possibly to move that parking away from that entrance so that it's past where the buses will be turning, or alternately to create a separate entrance, which you've examined. So, so you've answered part of my question, and I understand the grades don't work, given the, you're diminishing the distance, so you have to get to the same elevation, and you can't do it in a shorter distance without increasing the grade. But I, but I think if you, if you were to try to relocate the existing, if you go back to your, your plan, the existing parking spaces, as you come off Blynn Road, if those were moved past where the buses turn into this new road,
Yeah.
That would satisfy my concern of segregating the two. And I think the site distance on Blynn Road would not suffer any more than it, than it has now.
Right.
So that would, that would satisfy my concerns.
The other thing that, and we could consider taking those parking spaces away, however, I believe, and Alan can speak to this, the, the utilization by the buses is usually during weekdays at specific times when the programs occur. The usage of the Blynn lot is primarily on weekends, and I believe the lot fills up at the back first, at the bottom first. So these spaces up at the top, where there might be that conflict, would be at a time when it's not likely that there would be any buses using that route.
I hear what you're saying, but from a design standpoint, I don't like a design to not be as good as it can and then rely on timing. I'd rather if the timing doesn't work, that the design still satisfies my concern for safety, because I think that the buses exiting that site, as well as coming in, are going to interfere with regular passenger vehicles. That's my concern, so. I'm not suggesting you eliminate the parking, I'm suggesting perhaps you reallocate them further, further into the site. Because I think we're talking about, about six spaces.
Yes. It's just those six spaces.
That, I mean, I'm not, I'm not looking for an answer as we stand here.
Yeah, okay.
But you understand, my concern is not, is not trying to create a separate entrance, it's just to segregate them. They could both enter the site, pedestrian traffic goes straight ahead, and not pedestrian, regular passenger vehicles go straight ahead, buses will turn to the left, and once the passenger vehicles go straight ahead, they're then free to park. You're not interfering any parking spaces with bus traffic, and that's my concern.
Okay.
So.
We will take a look at that.
Okay.
What is the overall cost of investment that you guys are imagining?
It's considerable. There are still estimates being done, but this is, is not a small project, certainly.
Their ballpark that you're looking at? Just curious.
Do you have a...
Yeah. 22 to 23 million dollars.
I'm sorry?
22 to 23 million dollars.
That's a hit. Little bit.
It's, it's well worth it. The site looks beautiful.
Oh, it's, it's, well, there's no greater stewards for the environment than...
Yeah, it's fantastic.
The only thing, you know, as we get more into the stormwater, obviously, there's a lot of wetlands in the area, we want to be sensitive that whatever stormwater practices you do, don't take water that would necessarily fuel those areas and deteriorate them, and I'm sure you guys are looking at that as you go through.
We are, we are.
Any other questions at this time?
I apologize for not being at this visit, but I'm just curious, since there's so many different turnarounds and horseshoes and parking lots, has the fire department or anybody with emergency vehicles in mind did a walkthrough on this?
We've not had a chance to walk through with them, but we have included in the set, a set of turning diagrams that show the fire vehicle can, as a bus, and a bus can, can negotiate these areas.
You are scheduling a walkthrough with the actual, because a lot of stuff works on paper.
Right.
It doesn't always work when you're behind the wheel.
Yeah, we will, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else this time? John?
Nothing really. We'll definitely be making some referrals, for sure, I think we have already, but we haven't heard back too much. But I think it's ready for a public informational hearing, probably.
Okay. So we'll get that scheduled?
Excuse me?
We'll get that scheduled?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If possible, we'll, I don't know what date you were thinking about, but if the first meeting is September, would be possible. That would be preferable.
Sure.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Next on the agenda, we have Nantucket Sound Sons LLC. This is a discussion of amended site plan locations, 385 Kear Street.
Good evening. Joseph Thompson, architect, representing the Nantucket Sound, continued hearing on the, the proposed site plan changes. If the board will allow, I'll just upload some new material as far as current condition of the site, and some of the proposed detailing for each of the screening areas that are So currently on the screen is the present condition of the site, visited earlier today. The owners put forth some best effort to do a good job on finishing the landscaping, completing the screening work on a few different areas that we've been in discussion on, both the mechanical equipment area, the dumpster enclosure, and the proposed propane tank area. And so the site is really starting to come together, and is almost substantially complete at this point. The equipment area that's mostly in question is in that red box there. This is a view from, by the corner of the entry, from Kear Street. And some additional images along Kear Street, the building from the side profile. The applicant went ahead and also did some additional screening to cover the exterior electrical meters that were required by the utility to be on the outside of the building, and are working on landscaping planters and a number of different strategies to beautify the site. And so this is basically the final product of the area that's, that's in question. On the, on the right-hand side, you can see what the area is proposed for the propane tank to hopefully support the, the restaurant tenant that would like to lease the ground floor. There's a staircase that leads up to the parking lot, and then at the upper level, what's the beginning of the proposed dumpster enclosure out of matching material. And then the left-hand side, the enclosure for the units themselves. And so the applicant, he can't be here tonight, unfortunately, had a family issue, had to be out of town, but I think he's done a really nice job here of, again, putting forth best effort to try to really screen the, the different elements that are of concern really well, and come up with a solution that is hard to find aesthetically objectionable to the site, that doesn't detract from the building, doesn't detract from the site. We've started to detail what these enclosures could be, if they're acceptable to the board. This is a proposed layout for the dumpster enclosure. It includes bollards to protect the construction, so that way it can avoid the potential for impact of the dumpsters, or any activity inside of, of potentially damaging that fence. Proposed screening for the propane tank area, which again, protected with bollards, would have access doors, and as you saw in the photographs, completely screens, you know, any equipment that would be behind it from view. The fencing that was reviewed on-site has opaque privacy panels, and it's at a six-foot height. It's again softened by the arborvitae that's been planted that's in front of it, you can see on the elevations, and again, the, the equipment pad itself. The board did ask at the last meeting that we explore the possibility of relocating the units to the roof, so what we've done is we did an as-built of the roof itself. We verified the dimensions, they're within a few inches of the actual design intent, so the roof was constructed accurate to plan. And what we're showing on the, the plan right now is basically where the exhaust would, if the restaurant tenant were to proceed for, where the exhaust would need to exit from the shaft that's currently there. That's that red circle, and that's a 10-foot radius around it, where we're not allowed to have any other equipment or be within any, you know, physical construction of the building. The shaded area at the bottom is where proposed makeup air unit would be located on dunage that would be supported by two steel beams that are already integrated in the construction. And so that intake's placed on the left-hand side, so we provide enough distance between the exhaust and the intake. And so while you can see that there, there's some room outside that boundary, the owner asked that we bring in Mr. Leroy from Restaurant Clinic and Fire Protection, who is the proposed installer for the kitchen equipment hood, to talk about his experience with dealing with these units and practically issues that he's run into in the past with applications. So if I could bring up Mr. Leroy, he'd like to speak to the installation of the kitchen equipment.
If you could. Is there any way to zoom in on that?
There is, if I open up the PDF, the plan, I can do that.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. Good evening, everyone.
How are you?
My name is Leroy Bartlett, from Restaurant Clinic and Fire Protection, and I was hired by the tenant to install his fire suppression and hood system. So I have taken a look in the roof myself, and I have noticed that the surrounding space and the depth of the roof will not allow those air conditioning units to breathe properly, based upon the degree and the dimensions. If horizontally, the duct exhaust determination system is installed from any unit, it's got to be 10 feet. If we're going on a 45 or a 90-degree angle, it's got to be 21 feet, 3 inches. And if we're going on a 10-degree angle, we still need 12 feet. And if we're going on a 30-degree, it needs 10 feet, 12 inches, from NFPA standards. And based upon experience, I have done a lot of this work before, and wherever we have a AC condition, air conditioning unit, some is inline, some is external, and the exhausting system from the kitchen has to be 15 feet away from the intake. Some places you do not have that amount of capability, so they go 10 feet. And the size unit that is going to be there for the fresh air intake is going to be like a 5 Ospor unit, which is giving 300 CFM coming in. So it would be pulling a lot of hair, and there's a depth like nine feet, the housing on top of the roof is nine feet deep, so we still have to raise the exhaust hub in order for it to get the proper exhaust in through that section, and the hair that's coming in still need at least another four feet more higher from the floor level. So on my inspection and my recommendation to the architect, I suggest that he would use that space upstairs only for the intake for the kitchen and the exhausting purposes, because the heat that generated from those nine units downstairs is going to be like, in summertime, we're looking at like maybe 200 or 300 degrees heat in that box from all those units running together with the exhaust. So there's going to be a lot of burden and the intake that going back to the kitchen to provide fresh air. And without that circulation, with my experience, there's going to be a backdrop from both the exhaust and the air conditioning unit back to the kitchen. So most of what we're taking out will be coming back through the fresh air. So I do recommend to the architect to set it in a way where, if it could work with the tone, we'd appreciate if you, of course, you know, give them the opportunity. we'd appreciate if you, of course, you know, give them the opportunity to use it where they have it based upon the restriction of the fire code from NFPA.
And NFPA is National Fire Protection Agency?
National Fire Protection Association.
So with your plan for the equipment in this area that exists on the roof, anything be penetrating past the roof line?
Only, no. The roof line as it is now, it will not penetrate that box.
So that nine-foot height?
It's nine foot high.
So from the floor?
From the floor, we could go.
To the top of that?
It's nine feet. But the exhaust would go four feet away from the floor.
So it will still be under that and won't be visual from anybody?
No, it will never be visual. So the fresh air now, based upon the space, we could do the 90-degree angle and put it like 21 feet away from the fresh air. So instead of going horizontally, we go to one corner with the fresh air, so it doesn't interfere with the exhaust. Because the exhaust is still gonna be within that nine-feet depth.
And for purposes of fire protection, are you gonna have to, would any fire protection system have to go in up there for this equipment?
No, we're gonna put a fire suppression nozzle into the duct, pining up to the exhaust duct.
This is the duct that was meant for the units?
The duct for the exhaust, for the grease, they're gonna be a nozzle up in that duct, coming from the fire suppression system.
So that duct penetrating through the middle of the building, through this duct?
Yeah, the one that is penetrated through the middle of the building, there're gonna be a nozzle.
Through the residential areas is compliant?
Yes, there's gonna be a nozzle going up there. And there's also gonna be a two-inches fire wrap in that sleeve around the duct to prevent, and it's like 2,000 fire rated. And it takes at least approximately four to six hours if there's a fire in the building to penetrate that duct. And it's gonna be a 14-gauge black iron coming from 18-gauge stainless steel all the way through the building. So based upon my experience on wooden building and structural building all the way from concrete, that degree of duct work we normally use to prevent any lighter fire in a commercial residential mixed building.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
The unit that you're talking about for the duct work, you're calling it the duct work, what form does that take? In other words, what shape is that? What are the dimensions of the unit itself?
The unit or the duct itself?
The duct that's gonna, that you're talking about, that's the connect, that's getting the fresh air, you're saying it is four feet off of the floor area, and it goes to, I think you said approximately nine feet. But what, what is the shape of it? In other words, what form does it take? Is it square? Is it round? Is it a cone-shaped top?
It's a square, it's a square unit.
Okay.
So we isolate it from the floor.
Okay.
So it's gonna push down, the fresh air gonna be down, so down draws fresh air.
Okay.
So it's pulling air from around back into the building.
From the, from the top of the unit?
From the top, from the side of the unit, you go from the side of the unit.
Could the?
It has filters.
Could that unit be greater than four feet off the, off the floor area?
Based upon the weight, based on the weight of it, it could be, it could be. But because of maintenance purposes, we normally go four to six feet with the fresh air.
I mean, I understand you weren't here for the prior discussions we've had about the conflict between the air conditioning units and what you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
So the statement was made, well, the air conditioning units conflict with this proposed?
With intake.
Intake. And it's the other way around. The air conditioning units were intended to be up there first. So you would have been dealing with the air conditioning units in place had the procedure followed properly. So to state it the other way is not quite accurate, and that's not your fault, I understand. But my feeling is, put the air conditioning units in place and solve the problem perhaps by lifting that, your unit further up and perhaps putting a catwalk around it for maintenance and service and so forth. Because I would be less against having that unit elevated so that perhaps the top of it, the top of the building would show the top of your unit as opposed to having these units on the ground. That's, that's my feeling. But I'm one board member, so.
It is nine feet deep, that housing.
Right.
Up there. So if I go from the floor, you know, five feet up with a fresh air, then it wouldn't be showing through that nine-feet section of the building. You could, if you're looking from across, you wouldn't see the top of it.
Right, that's, but even if you did, I'm saying that I find that less objectionable than what we have now on the ground. But if we were to raise it up, given the site distance also, you're not, you're not gonna fly in the air up to the, a true elevation of the building. You're looking at that building from the ground. So wherever you're looking at it from the ground, you're looking at it over the end of the gable end roof. You're probably never gonna see your unit, even if it is elevated. So putting it higher, to me, to create more floor area would be, if it's possible engineering-wise, if it will work, that to me works. And so I, I don't, I'm not willing to compromise having those units on the ground for the sake of putting this duct work in place. So I think that an alternate design for your duct work is, sounds to me like it's achievable. Because the unit itself is not the problem of dimensions, it's the area around it that has to draw the air.
The airflow.
So if it is elevated, you're gonna have a greater amount of air, because those units are gonna sit below your unit. Those air conditioning units will sit below your, your unit. So I think there, it relieves the conflict that we're talking about here. And for me, that's a design solution that would work. I don't know if that, if you're getting what I'm saying.
I'm getting what you're saying.
Okay.
The only problem I would have with that, due to the fact that heat rises.
Right.
Those heat that the unit generate, they're gonna be going up.
I understand.
Then the fresh air is gonna be pulling anything that goes towards it.
Maybe there's a baffle in between that causes the air conditioning, you know, to, and it, don't forget, it's seasonal as well, so. I don't, I'm not a, I'm not a mechanical engineer, you know, trained as an architect, so I don't, I can't tell you how that would work or not work. I don't have a feeling for it. I'm just, I have a theoretical feeling that perhaps that's a way to investigate a solution.
So the other thing we could do, I could introduce to the owner, instead of using a regular return air, you could use a temporary unit. Which, due to the fact that you mentioned the change of season, when it's cold, that unit wouldn't actually bring cold air to the building.
You want ambient air?
It would bring a warm air.
Condition, return air.
So there won't be problems of such during the winter time.
Right.
But in the summertime, there where the conflict comes in.
Right.
For, with the heat from the AC unit, it becomes a conflict with the temporary unit. Because now all things gonna be hot, so it's gonna be coming in hot air from the fresh air unit.
I hear you. I, there's gotta be an engineering solution that I'm just not aware of, but does exist.
It kinda boils down to if the air units were up there and the restaurant decided to come into the building, now you would have to retrofit the system to fit the space that's available. And I understand exactly what he's talking about, that if everything that was supposed to be there when this was originally approved was there, you would have to design around it, to put your restaurant system in. Is that possible?
That is a fact. There's another way we could do the fresh air if those unit was in place.
That's what we're asking.
By using what's called inline fresh air unit. That would have to be installed in the building itself. Then we would only have a duct going upstairs, and it could go wherever, like, you know, maybe at the hedge of the building, because it's gonna be taken in here. But the unit will be in the kitchen at that point.
Hmm. So you wouldn't see any duct work or anything outside with that unit?
No, you wouldn't see that unit here. That unit would be in the building.
The other, and I appreciate what you just said, and I don't wanna lose that thought, but the other thought I have that I don't wanna lose as well is that there are, there are a number of units, I wanna say there's nine or 10 units that are down on the ground. Those don't have to be located adjacent to each other to form one big mass. They could be placed, I think, in the corners. They could be separated so that your distance, your separation distance can be maintained. In other words, if you were to put those in the corners and put your unit in the middle where you want it with the, with the area that you drew around it, that I was struggling to look at, quite honestly. I think the combination of what you just said and what I'm, what I just pointed out might be a way to, to get where we wanna get. It sounds to me like this is doable, not, not that this is a, not that this, this is a reach, but it's just an adjustment.
I would think if they had different units, like one-way unit, that would be better. But this unit takes from one end and blow to the other. So you know, when you have them like this against any solid wall.
Right.
They're gonna be restricted.
Right, no, I understand.
So they would never actually produce the airflow, because they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be breathing. Those units are designed for open space.
Right.
So maybe, you know, like the person who sells the unit didn't actually ask them, you know, what kind of unit they want. So those are open spaces.
Right now, there's a baffle that goes around them. They're, they're kind of, they're isolated in an area smaller than what's up on the roof now. The area up on the roof is much larger than the area that they're housed in on the ground. So I've got, and I've gotta believe that that can be replicated on the roof to some extent and still have them function and be within the requirements of the manufacturer.
So if they use those baffles, solid bafflers on it downstairs, they're not gonna work. You'll have to be baffled like from management.
They exist, so it's a further reason to not have them there, I guess. I don't know.
So if.
But I, I think maybe we need to go, rather than pursue the suggestion I was trying to not lose, maybe we should stay with your, your comment about an alternate way to, to handle the air makeup. The fresh air that you were talking about.
It's something to look into on both angles.
I, I think the bottom line is you're saying that you can find a way to do this. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I could find many ways to do it, once we're not gonna have those, um, problem with those unit, those AC units.
The problem would be alleviated if the board decided to let the guy keep the units on the ground instead of on the roof. We have not decided that we're gonna have him change it. He's, he's asking for change, right? We didn't, we didn't decide yet whether, and if we decide you can skate, then you don't have to worry about it. You can put anything you want on the roof.
That's exactly right, so.
That's right.
So I think the board should decide whether we're gonna require you to put the stuff up before you guys go, the applicant goes for more expenses.
That's right. What it is, is it's not impossible. It's not, but it's not ideal. It's more difficult. And so.
I, I totally agree with you.
Yep. So basically, the applicant has put his best for, efforts forward to screen this as well as he can. And if the board believes that this detracts from the site, this action that was an error, that shouldn't have been taken, wasn't in conformance of site plan, we acknowledge that, then this is the path we'll need to advise them to proceed. That's within the board's right, obviously. If the board feels that they've made a diligent enough effort, that they've done a nice job with the screening, that it doesn't detract from the property, then maybe discussion's different. But that's, I think, the juncture we're at.
I think as one member of the board, I think the screening and the work they've done out there is very tasteful, it looks very nice. However, what I'm hearing is that the units, as they exist, because they're in an enclosed area, might not function correctly. As they, as, as they exist.
Just said, yeah.
That's what he said. So as they exist. Well, that puts it different. That, that could be a problem. Again, not to keep kicking the can down the road, but I think we need to find the answers to that. Now you've got two conflicting.
Let me beg to butt here. What I meant when I said the fields that are around them, the housing, if it's like a fencing where you have airspace moving through where they are, then they will work accurately at the point.
There's, there's a wall, it's walled on two sides, right? There's a physical, you know, it's concrete on two sides of it, they're right up next to it. And then there's this fencing around it. So it's in a very small area, again. And that's what I'm concerned about now. I personally think what's been done on the site, again, I'm not condoning the way it got there, right? Again, we really have to find a way to stop this from happening. I've got some ideas about that, but that's gonna be a discussion with the town board. But I, I think what was done, and to your credit, the architecture is very, very nice. The building is beautiful. However, we're not condoning what was done out there, but it also sounds like it might not work correctly. That's my concern.
Only if the siding or solid siding.
It's.
But if they're fencing.
It is. It's in a, it's in a very small area that's, again, it's got a building on one side. It's got the wall of the terrace above it on the other, and then it's closed in on the other two. A very small area. These are, units are kinda right on top of each other.
Rich, I recall that they had put baffles that aimed the air up. I remember there was a discussion. And that I think it did conform to manufacturer specs. I remember that discussion. Just, just throwing that out there, so this way we're on the same page.
And we've heard that, but I think, the devil's in the details. I think we gotta make sure that what's out there is gonna work. Again, the site, it's, I'm waiting to see what happens with the dumpster. I'm sure what you're gonna do there is gonna be very appropriate for the site. The site does look very nice. I, again, I'm not condoning the placing of the units. I think it's wrong, I know, for a lot of reasons. But also, you know, if we want the restaurant business to be successful without seeing all these ducts on the outside and, devil's in the details. Some, we need to get a clear answer on what's gonna work and what's not gonna work.
For me, for you to be clear as to how to come back to us, I think you should assume that those units that are on the ground, you've gotta find a place to put them up on the roof where they were originally approved and then engineer your duct work for the restaurant to conform with wherever you choose to locate them on the roof. We're not telling you where to put them. We're just telling you they gotta be on the roof. That's up to you to design how these two things fit together.
We didn't say that, yes.
Because, wait a minute, because what we did is we allowed you to continue after we put a stop work order on it, to allow you to continue to finish the building. Okay? And your design, I've looked at your drawings, I know drawings pretty well. It's a well-designed building. Your set of drawings were very good. Everything in that building was done pretty much to your design. We allowed it a change to the siding. I don't have a problem with the design or the execution of the rest of the building. My only issue is with the placement of those units. And they're in the wrong place, because we didn't approve them there. And now that we've allowed this to go down to the 98th yard, and we're almost at the finish line, and the building looks great, and the, and the details look very good, now we are introduced to a restaurant use that requires duct work that now interferes with our trying to put the units back on the roof. Well, it's the other way around. Our units are supposed to be on the roof, and your duct work is supposed to conform to that. So you need to come back, at least for this board member, show me where those units can be on the roof and show me how your duct work can go. And if the duct work is elevated in, in, is greater in elevation than it might otherwise be, and we have to approve a modification to that, I'm willing to listen to that. But the process should be, put them on the roof first like we were supposed to do, and then we go forward. That's, that's how I feel. That's because our resolution and our plans were all approved with the public input and everything. I'm not willing to have it be ignored, and I'm not saying that either of you were part of that. I'm saying that's the result that we have. I'm not willing to just go, well, you ignored it, and now you got the benefit of having ignored it. I'm just not willing to go there. Especially when there's a way to design your way out of it. And I think you're a competent designer, you're a competent engineer. I got the feeling that the solution is standing at the microphone, and you just need to tell your client, this is what we gotta do. So I, I, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but I've said this over and over again, a lot of different ways. I don't think you have any, there should be no vagueness in your understanding of what I'm saying.
Well, I think the board should vote first on whether we want to move the units up to the roof. If we vote no, then the guy's got carte blanche on the roof, whatever he wants to do.
We can put it to a vote.
He's got, he's, he had two problems here. First of all, he circumvented the, the site plan. And second of all, he wants to rent to a tenant that's gonna cause more problems.
Right, exactly.
So, so we see his, his problems multiplying, all because this stuff is not on the roof.
Right.
But before, and I don't wanna put the cart before the horse. But again, it might be moot if that equipment where it is isn't gonna work. And that's what they have to show us. I don't know that. We need to know that first, because.
I'm not convinced of that one way or the other. I just don't, I don't know. I mean, I heard this, I heard what Sergio said, and I heard it in the field, so I'm not of the belief that it won't work. I'm just saying that, to me, it's in a tighter, it's a tighter, it's conformed more tightly now than it needed, would need to be if it were up on the roof, if that duct work did not need to be there. So if you bring it up on the roof, there's probably another way of placing it on the roof that will accommodate your duct work and accommodate the manufacturer's requirements for spacing. that will accommodate your duct work and accommodate the manufacturer's requirements for spacing for both air conditioning and duct work. I don't know. I'm just, I'm, I think that's where your effort has to be placed in coming up with a solution.
That's all understood, and it sounds like what we need to do at this point is see that effort through fully, come back to the board with a fully developed solution, with very conclusive results.
Yes.
My impression is it probably can be sorted out. So if the efforts that have been made to date are not acceptable as they stand, it doesn't sound like they are, this is the path that we need to take, and the board's position's understood.
All right. So we'll see at the next meeting.
Can, can I ask a question before we leave this? The refuse enclosure?
Yes.
They are proposing to use the same type of fence and screening, which is a high-quality fence. I wanna put to the board whether you let them go and finish that?
I have no problem with that.
No, no problem. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the Lamp, Lamp subdivision. This is a discussion of a minor subdivision. Locations, three, five, seven Crow Hill Road.
What's the proposed subdivision? How many houses?
Yeah.
There's a big problem there.
Don't see any houses.
How many?
Oh. Perfect.
Huh?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Yes. That's the bigger issue.
Okay.
That's what I get. I can't get past that.
All right.
Sorry.
No problem. Good evening. Jody Cross from Zarin and Steinmetz. I'm here tonight with Evan Lamp, the property owner, and Paul Lynch, the project engineer. Uh, David Steinmetz sends his regards. He was not able to make it today. You get me.
It's a low.
Not a problem. Good evening.
So we're here in connection with a two, a proposed two-lot minor subdivision. This is at three fifty-seven Crow Hill Road. The property is four point four six three acres in the R one eighty zoning district. Right now, it's improved with a single-family house. Uh, we're looking to subdivide it into two lots. Uh, the existing lot with the existing house would be two point six acres. Um, the new lot would be one point eight three seven acres, so both would comply with the eighty thousand square foot. And also, uh, we took a look at the GIS maps, and the properties in this area all, they're on average about two acres. So there's, uh, one that's about an acre. There's one that's two and a half acres. Excuse me. Uh, this one is over four, so subdividing it, they would actually be creating lots that are more consistent with the commu- the neighborhood. So right now, the property accesses Crow Hill with a, um, a driveway that, um, other lots do access and have easements over. So lots seven, nine, and ten do also access the road over that easement. So when we subdivide the lot, the, uh, the new lot would, um, have the driveway property, and the existing lot would then be granted an easement over that drive. So we acknowledge that this does not meet the two hundred-foot frontage requirement, so we would need a variance, um, and possibly a two eighty A var- uh, variance as well. So we need to go to the zoning board. The, um, the property is large enough to, uh, have, uh, sufficient location for a well and septic. The soils have been tested. They're good soils. Paul, uh, could speak more to that. And we also, I'm told that we have sufficient space to mitigate any of the additional runoff from impervious surfaces. Um, otherwise, besides the frontage, we would meet, uh, all zoning requirements. So we're here really just to introduce this project, um, to answer any questions you have. And Paul's here. If you have any questions on the, uh, engineering, though obviously we haven't gotten very far into the engineering, but, uh, we can certainly answer some questions.
How wide's the common driveway?
The driveway right now is fourteen feet.
And how much available space do you have in that strip that you show? How wide is that?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
The frontage right now is thirty-five, so, right? So it could be expanded to twenty-five.
Are you serving how many houses altogether on that common?
Today?
No.
If, with this proposal. It would be five total.
Five from three.
From four.
From four, okay. One.
So we're showing all the houses that access the easement now.
Yeah, I see that.
So what is the current code if this was being built out?
In terms of what?
The road with. For fire protection and.
Well.
It would be a public road.
It would loo- most likely be a public road with five lots.
Yeah.
It would be a major subdivision.
But if it was a private road, let's say they wanted to keep it.
Yeah, I think it's, I think in some cases you still get to where you need the twenty-six. Uh, but we'll have to check that. I mean, that, that just needs to be looked at. That's in the fire code, uh, not going to exist in our zoning code, that requirement.
Right. That, that would be my concern.
Yeah.
Is if we're adding the, you know, comply with the, at least the access and the police and fire departments are unhappy with that. You know, as one member of the board, I don't, and I'd really like to take a site visit out here.
Sure.
I mean, it looks like it, it fits and con- it's conforming with what's already out there. Again, it would be a public safety issue that I'd be concerned about.
Understand.
That's why I asked about some of the whi- distances. I, I don't have a real problem with this concept.
Okay, so it just comes down to can we make the driveway wide enough to accommodate and make the fire department comfortable with the access?
Right, and emergency vehicles.
And emergency vehicles.
You, you may also need to provide, uh, a turnaround.
Hammerhead type.
Either a hammerhead, uh, a- again, the code has changed in the last number of years, so I don't wanna try to quote anything. But, uh, there are some pretty strict requirements at this point, so.
My understanding is we have enough room to do a, a, a pullover? That's certainly something we could look into more.
All right, so in the meantime, maybe we could set a site visit with the department?
Sure.
We could go out, take a look, maybe even invite the, the, uh, fire officials out at the same time.
That'd be great.
Right?
Yeah.
Outside that, any concerns? John?
None at this moment. We, we're gonna set up a site visit for you guys?
Please.
Okay.
Is it premature to ask for a public information hearing?
I think so.
Yes.
I could ask. It's just premature.
You learned that from Mr. Steinmetz, right?
I did, indeed.
I would expect nothing less.
All right, so let's set that site visit in the meantime. Nice try.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We'll meet you out there.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna put you this, this name, Aronson subdivision. Discussion of a minor subdivision. Locations, one, eight, seven, nine, French Hill Road.
Hello?
How are you?
Good. Thanks.
How you doing? Where is this? So you wanna tell us about the project? This is a existing, um, one-story frame residence on French Hill Road. It looks like you wanna cut the back in half and put another house off of Darby Road?
Right.
And it would be on septic and well?
No, no, we're on town water.
Town water, all right, so just septic. And this, doesn't look like there's any variances being sought here?
What's the, what are the, what are the sizes of the two lots?
The zoning is, uh, one acre. We have, I think, I, it's just shy of two, so.
Okay.
One point nine eight.
One. One's already existing, yeah, like. It's, it's two, just shy of two actual acres. So it could accommodate two planning acres.
Do what?
A planning, a planning acre is forty thousand square feet. So you have eighty, eighty thousand plus.
Eighty-six, is that the total?
An acre, an acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet.
Right, it's.
So two of that would be, be eighty-six and change eighty-seven. But a planning acre is forty thousand square feet. So you could get two planning acres in less than two actual acres. So that's to allow for roads and so forth.
Sure.
They got eighty-six.
Eighty-six point seven.
Eighty-six thousand, yeah, eighty-six point seven.
Right.
Okay.
So, so for area-wise, unless you've subdivided it in a wrong way, you could accommodate what you're looking to do is what I, my point.
Okay, great.
I don't know where the, I didn't do the math on your area of the new proposed lot, theoretically, you could do that.
Right.
It's as close to half as.
Okay. Yeah. No wetlands, anything out there? All right, can we set this for our site visit the same time we do the other? Sure. We get eyes on it? Okay, seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
So we'll set up a site visit. We'll meet you out in the field. Take a look.
And, uh, how do we do, how do we get contacted for that?
We're gonna go staff.
We'll contact you.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much.
All right. Have a good night. Thank you. Okay, next we have four oh one East Main Street. This is discussion of the site plan. Address is the same.
I know where this, I think I know where this is. This little Wet Willies. Remember?
Is it?
I think so. I was glad when they shut down. All the music used to come up on. Good evening.
How you doing?
Good evening. Hi. I'm Brian Hildenbrand. I'm the engineer for the project. And I'm joined tonight with Rich McHale, the owner and applicant. And, uh, we're here tonight, it's, uh, the, the site is a previously, um, location of a restaurant. Um, it's currently vacant. The building was demolished. Um, as it sits now, it's, the building's gone. There's some remnants of the parking lot. Uh, and what we're planning to do is a, um, a small commercial office. The building, the proposed buildings, it's twenty-four by thirty. You know, so relatively small, and no variances are needed. Uh, we are proposing, you know, ample parking with the, for a new parking lot. Provide, we, we previously had a larger building, um, that we have approval from the health department for. So we do have septic approval on that area shown by that green rectangle, uh, for a larger building. So now we're coming in with a smaller one. Um, it's town water. We have space to mitigate the stormwater, but we still are in the preliminary stages of the, of the design. The, you know, the major, there is a stream, um, page right that's channelized. It has, um, it's not, it's, um, walls on either side. It's not a natural brook or anything. But we did locate the building where the previous building existed.
How far back from the lake are you?
Uh, I don't know. I, there's a, there's a whole row of lots behind us, and then the lake.
I'd like to see.
It might be a, um.
You can show.
On the first sheet, there's a location map. So there's a, there's that long lot and building between us and the lake.
Yeah, yeah.
What, you don't know the distance?
Offhand, no, I do not. I mean, it's.
Gotta be over a hundred yards.
Yeah, it's hundreds of feet. It's.
This is tall wall, isn't it?
So I mean, that's the, the extent. We submitted some conceptual, um, renderings of what the building is proposed to be. It's, um, like I said, it's a office, um, country style. I don't, you know, I'm not an architect, but it's a. There's a, a lead to, uh, covered entrance in the front.
I got that.
In the site plan?
No. Yeah, I get it.
It doesn't show anything back. Reference map is too small for you.
I mean, I know where it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this is on, uh, septic.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any immediate concerns? No, pretty straightforward. Pretty. Pretty straightforward. Yeah. Maybe we could set another site visit that morning?
Sure.
Followed by coffee?
You gotta wait for coffee till then?
Huh?
So is this property, you surrounded by, um, by the, uh, the old public beach property on the lakeside, uh, you know, on the south side?
Uh, I need to understand the question.
To the south of your site, is that part of the old beach with the larger parcel?
Yeah.
That kinda wraps around it, right?
But you can see it.
But it wraps around the southern end of yours, because that's where the stream goes through that rock, you know, that wall channel.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's right across from the deli. The old bar, the old bar was on it.
Wet Willies.
Wet Willies. Thirsty Will.
If I said that, I, you know, should have led with that.
I was very happy when they shut down because all their music, I live up the hill right behind it. Go up the hill and we all hear it in the middle of the night, you know?
Any, any music planned?
Yeah, no music planned.
Should have proposed the resurrection of Wet Willies. All right, so we'll set a site visit. I mean.
Yeah, let's take a look.
Someone will reach out?
Yeah, the planning department.
The staff, they will reach out to you.
First flush, it looks pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys. Have a good night. Okay, next we have Wipe Your Paws. This is a discussion of site plan. Locations, two zero one three Crom Pound Road.
Hi, how are you? I'm Christina Racanelli, owner of Wiper Paws. How's everybody doing?
Good, yourself?
Good. Um, so I think they're able, are you able to pull up the, okay. So I'm just here with the drawings tonight for the proposed outside area. Um, the pet relief area that would be fenced in with the crosswalk, um, alongside of the building and then across to the walking area for the dogs.
Really, all that's going on in the site plan is that you're taking away two parking spaces to put the walking area in? Is that, is that about right?
Correct, yeah. And also, there's gonna be the two parking areas, it's gonna be a fenced-in area. So we're putting up a fence as well.
Okay. And Sergio, isn't the town board, you've got legislation? Is it gonna cover this?
You got it in last item.
It's the last item on the list.
And is there any? Are you accommodating basically this, would this use be okay under that?
I believe the use would be okay under that, and, and the law is not to accommodate just this one project, but we have been getting a lot of interest in these types of uses. And, and that's what kind of was organic to the law.
So the regulations wouldn't cause a problem for this application?
No, I think, I think the regulations would strengthen this application in terms of, of what, what would need to be done and would need to be accommodated. For example, in the law, we included mandatory, um, uh, soundproofing if their interior office space, or whatever you wanna call it, is adjacent to other office spaces.
So we would have to make sure that whatever happened, this should comply with. As proposed, yeah. Have you read this proposal?
I have, yes.
Okay.
Is this have to wait?
I'm sorry?
Is this a location on the, on the spot?
This is a new location. I have a current location in Mount Kysko.
Do we have to wait for that law, or can we proceed?
You don't have to wait, but you can't approve it yet until the law is in place. You can review.
It's not a permitted use yet.
It's not a permitted use yet.
Okay.
There's, there's no.
Do you understand that, by the way?
I think so, so they're saying that you have, you're in the process of putting this law through.
We can process your application, but we can't approve it until that law is in place.
Okay. And what's the process to put the law in place, is it?
Oh, that's town board.
So we, we have it out for referral.
Okay.
So, we, uh, we have the draft law, we put it out for referral to, uh, the necessary agencies, and we're just waiting for some feedback back from them, and then the law will proceed down the path.
Okay.
Public hearing on the eighth.
I think we did, yeah, we already established, uh, we already set a public hearing on the eighth as well, so.
I'm sorry, when's the public hearing?
The public hearing is, I believe, on the eighth.
On the eighth, okay.
Yeah.
I have no problem with this.
I don't either. Any, any issues?
No.
Alright. So, we don't have any problems with it, I would just make sure that when you're working with the landlord and your architect, that you work closely with the planning department, with this proposed law.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, proposed code amendment that's coming out.
Okay.
So that whatever you do, it complies with that, so you should.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Are you, are you going to be producing a floor plan and how the, how the interior will be used?
Yes, that's at the works.
That's in the works now?
Yes.
So we'll see that before too long, hopefully, right?
Yes, hopefully.
Okay, great.
And just make sure whoever's doing that layout is familiar with this proposed law.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we have zoning board referral, this is Atrac Recycling Facility, VBA number eighteen dash twenty-four, location seventy-six, Route six.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
How are you?
Good, I'm doing okay.
Good.
Good to see you. Uh, David Cooper partnered with the law firm, is Aaron and Stein, that's here representing Atrac Recycling Center, uh, the owner of the eighteen acre parcel at, uh, Longwood Six in the town's I-one district. Uh, they are ultimately seeking a site plan and special permit before your board to develop a recycling facility at the site. Um, we are here tonight on a zoning board referral, uh, asking certain questions of you, we are seeking a variance from the side yard setback, as I know you, you are well aware of, but just so that, uh, it's in, in the record. Um, the, the, the town is, is opine that a one hundred foot setback would, uh, uh, apply to, uh, the, uh, the north, eastern, eastern property line, which is where the, the proposed building is, uh, located, I'll just, as soon as it comes up, you can see it. Um, with me tonight is Margaret McManus, uh, our engineer from Beatty and Watson, uh, Pat Cardelimi Junior, the principal, Mark Millsba from Sterling Environmental Engineering, that's the applicant's part three sixty, uh, uh, specialist and, and expert. We've asked Mark here tonight because we know that there've been some questions about the operations and, and regulations and how the DEC oversight, uh, occurs in the site, so we thought Mark would be very helpful. Um, and also, uh, my colleague, Jaclyn Cohen, who you know, you know as well, is, is with me as well. The primary question we, we think is being asked of, of this board at this point is the, the proper location for the building. Um, we are seeking a one hundred foot variance to, uh, locate the building as shown on the screen right now, which I'll call in, in the back of the, of, of the site, that is the, the, uh, sighting that would require a hundred foot setback on the, the right side or, or that eastern side of, of, of the property. Um, there is a, uh, alternate location that could, uh, that we could go with, which is further, uh, or closer to the, uh, Route six, which would comply with all setbacks. Um, the applicant believes that the, the sighting that we're looking at right now is actually a better sighting, I'll get there, I'll get there in a sec, sorry. Let me just go back, yep. We think, what we're looking at right now is the better sighting because there is significantly more buffer between Route six and the building in terms of wooded area, wetlands, et cetera, uh, as well as, although you can't see it on, on this site, Gay Ridge Road, um, and, and the residences there, uh, to move the building, uh, forward, uh, down, and, and now if you wanna just, uh, go to the next one, there we go. Um, this would be the, the, the alternative location that would comply with, with all setbacks. Uh, it would bring it significantly closer to Route six, um, and because of the topography, we think, uh, it would become visible, uh, along Route six, as well as potentially visible from, uh, the adjacent, or the, the, uh, the properties on, uh, on Gay Ridge Road, um, and, uh, potentially as you're, as you're moving up and down the street. So, one of the, 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 the primary question we're asking the, the board is, uh, which location do you believe is, is better? Because frankly, if, if ultimately the town is saying to us, look, um, we think actually the, the, what I'll call the compliant, the zoning compliant, um, location is better, then, you know, why spin wheels before the zoning board if, if, uh, ultimately this board is gonna say, we would rather see it located, uh, where we're looking at it now? Um, so that's question one. Question two that we wanted to answer, and perhaps, perhaps we go there first and then, and then talk about the sighting, is operations. I know at the last meeting, I, I couldn't make the last meeting, but at the last meeting, there were a lot of questions about, uh, how, when a truck arrives, what is it gonna do, what's, what, what's the control, where does it go to actually unload, how does that process work? Who's oversight, you know, who's looking at making sure that it's the correct material that, that's, uh, being, being unloaded and, and being treated correctly, so. Uh, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it to you and the board, if you want us to go to the operations first, happy to ask Mark to come up and start talking to you about, about that, or if you wanna talk about the, um, location.
So, and I see you put on here, as we asked, the proposed, uh, development next door.
Mm-hmm.
Which, thank you, that clearly shows where these residences would be, uh, in comparison to the first proposal. One of the other things we did ask at that last meeting is, because the buildings are laid out differently. Right, the building up front is much wider, it's not as long. Um, and one of the things we were talking about operationally.
Mm-hmm.
Is how that would actually work, we were looking at turning radiuses and other things to help us get to that decision.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have that?
Do you wanna go through it, Margaret?
Uh, so these are the turning radiuses.
Could, could we just, excuse?
Yeah.
Could we just go back for one minute, 'cause you had the dimensions that were shown on the second plan?
I have those for the first one, too, would you like me?
Yeah, I just, I didn't know where the measurements were taken from, in other words, it was not a scale that I could read from here. In other words, as an example, at three ninety-six, I don't know, it's from the corner of the building to, I guess that's a residence?
Yeah, it's, it's one twelve to the road, it's three ninety-six to a residence on Gay Ridge Road, and then, I think five hundred to another one hundred.
And what are the setback requirements that, that we're dealing with without a variance?
The one hundred which is shown.
Two, two, it's two hundred feet, correct?
No, it's one hundred for the, for, for that setback there.
I asked that question the last time, whether or not there had to be a two hundred setback from the residential properties to the south.
Right.
And what, is there an answer to that?
Well, the, so the, the, the code itself states, no building shall be located at a distance less than two hundred feet from a boundary, which adjoins any residential district. Your code then says, a residential district, uh, the, where residential district line follows streets, the center line shall be construed to be the boundary of the district. So the, so the district boundary here is the center line of, of Route six. So the lot line, the boundary of the lot, does not adjoin a residential district, so in this instance, the one hundred foot setback applies.
I don't, I don't follow that at all.
I don't follow that logic.
I understand, I understand what you just said about the center of the, the right, right away for the road being the measuring point. But how did it get to be from two hundred feet to one hundred feet? You lost me.
Oh, if it, if it doesn't, if it, sorry, I can give you the whole thing, but if it doesn't adjoin a residential district, then it's a hundred foot setback, that's what. So, because the, that boundary line doesn't adjoin a residential district, it's a one hundred foot setback from that side of, of the, um, of the building.
And that boundary line doesn't adjoin any res, any district at all, if it's the middle of the road.
No, the, 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 the industrial district goes to the middle, the center line.
What's on the other side of the center line is, is nothing, because you're saying it's the center of the road.
No, 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 I, your code defines it, where, where district line follows streets.
We'll have our attorney maybe answer.
I'm.
Not because, not because I'm doubtful of what your answer is, or, or because I'm doubtful of what your answer is, but if you're telling me that your district on your side of the road is measured to the middle of that road, then the same has to be applicable from the other side of the road, the residential area has to abut it.
Correct.
So that, that line now will be the, your zone on one side and a residential district on the other.
No, no, the, the, the boundary line is the lot line, the district line is the center line of the road, and so there's, the, the boundary line adjoins more industrial district. That's, that, the way, the way your, your code.
It might be right.
What, what section are you referring to?
Three hundred seven B is the definition of, of how you draw your boundary line?
Yeah.
Right?
Of a district.
Yeah, and three hundred ninety-seven A, which we're all familiar with, because it's the same, it's the same provision that we've, we've been discussing, talks about the boundary line and district lines and setbacks.
So because of Route six, you're basically saying your property doesn't adjoin the, the district across the street?
Correct, correct. So, the, the, we, we, so that would be the zoning compliant layout.
So what are you calling the boundary?
The boundary of, of the lot line, lot, lot boundary.
Not of the zoning district?
No.
Okay, you're claiming that it does not take into account that the road does not, you're not abutting the boundary of the residential district because of the road? Is that what you're saying?
I'm, right, because there's more industrial districts after our, our, after our boundary line, just like if, if they were in the center of the industrial district, or if they were, if they were at the corner of an industrial district, it's.
Do we have a copy of our zoning map that we could pull up by chance?
Zoning map?
Yeah, it, it draws the line in the middle of the road. But, I, I tried to figure out a way to actually put it on, on, on that, but it, it.
You always gotta ask the youngest person in the room.
Could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is, is the applicant the owner of the property, or is he a contract vendor?
Owner.
He's the owner?
Yeah.
So that shows it, I mean, unless I'm mistaken, that shows it abutting residential, right? That line, that dark line is the separation between the two.
Right, but that's on our property line, the property line is.
I'm, I'm looking at strictly, I'm saying strictly from the town's official zoning map that shows the two uses, so, right? It shows. That map shows your property line, your zone, meeting the middle of the road.
So what is your hundred and twelve foot dimension, what is that measuring?
To the property line, to the boundary line, not the.
From your building to the property line?
Lot line, the lot line.
I don't, I don't wanna mix terms.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, so according to this, you would likely need to be two hundred fe- feet from the zoning boundary, which is in the middle of the road, as you're saying?
No, no, the boundary is the, is the lot line. Your bound, your lot, because we're talking about setbacks, right? The set, your, your setback is from, from your lot line.
I'm just trying to figure out where you're going, so I'm not, not again.
No, I, wait, hold on. This, I, I, I understand, I understand, we had a disagreement on, on the, on the interpretation of, of this code before with respect to the ambiguity, with all, with all due respect here.
I don't even think we're in an argument yet, I'm just trying to define where we're measuring from.
What I'm saying is, the boundary is the lot line. The district, the district line, right, is the center line of, of, well, we're all in agreement that the district line is in the center of the road, right?
For both, both directions?
Both directions, correct, yes. So the center line would be the adjoining location.
So, so the residential district, shown in yellow.
Right.
Is to the center line as your, your zone is to that center line as well?
That's correct.
So those two districts, zones, meet.
Or, they do, that's correct, but our, what I'm saying is the property boundary, the lot line, does not, and so that's why.
Okay.
There's no, it doesn't adjoin, that's, you know, Merriam-Webster defines adjoining means touching or bounding at a point. That doesn't happen here, our lot line does not touch or.
Again, this is, this is a, it really is gonna boil down to a.
I'm looking at the town attorney here.
We can write, we'll write another memo.
Sorry, dude.
Thank you.
But, the, 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 the question though, really, from, from the boards, from, from the boards' perspective, even, even if, even if you, we agree to disagree tonight on whether or not that's zoning compliant or not, is the location, right? Because at the end of the day, we could just go back to, I, I.
You can go back for another variance.
Another variance, right, we're just, right, and so, the, the, why, why keep on going around the circles? Let's put that question aside, respectfully, put that question aside, I, I won't bring it up again, I swear. And if we could just ask about the.
One of the things, alright, to go from there.
Okay.
One of the things that, that struck me about putting the building closer to Route six is you're gonna have all kinds of cross, you're gonna have traffic that's gonna move and, you know, it's gonna go up the hill and then it's gonna come back down. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure that's the, the best way to arrange the site. You know?
Well, the question, the, I think you're right, and what I just wanna jump in, keying off what you said is, you need to find what the best layout for the site is, given the parameters and the impacts carried with the use, so. So for instance, if you have the building in the, in the, on the back leg where it is, it's going to be a certain distance from, uh, or a potential certain distance from the proposed apartments, and also from a future development on, on the Whispering Pine site. That has to be taken into account, uh, whereas if you, uh, position the building somewhere similar or where they have shown it on their alternate, it may turn out to be less impactful because it is closer to a noise generator à la Route six.
Oh.
Uh, it is, it will possibly be able to be managed to be further away from the most im- impact of, uh, residential impact?
Up there, yeah.
Yeah, so it could be fur, not, not, you know, fur, not equidistant, but certainly further away enough that it makes the most sense somewhere else on the site that I don't think has been, you know, figured out yet. But I think that's the thing to do, is figure out where on this site is this building in the best position to manage all of the impacts to all of its neighbors.
Right. I think to appropriately answer that question, we really need to know where the, the setbacks are.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think there's gonna be, you know, there's potential for variance on this one regardless of where it goes.
I, I get that, but to lay the building out in the most appropriate location, we really need to know what the parameters are.
Right, the, the other thing I would put in there though is, is wetlands and, and buffer areas, right? Because the, the, one of the reasons why you, we, if you move it down, you don't want, you can't move it too, too far back because of the wetland there.
Got all extreme activity.
Yeah, and so, it's, it's not as, it's not as if we're just sort of randomly putting, what, you know, selecting two sites and just saying, either here or there, board, that's it. It's just, it's because of the, the, uh, the buffer and the wetland and the development, um, footprint, well, call footprint, but footprints at the lower portion, um, there's, you, there's not as much room to, to maneuver as there is up top.
And again, a lot of the reasons you have properties that are undeveloped is they were the toughest properties, right? The last ones to be built.
Oh, right.
Right?
Yeah.
So, on our end, or I'm sure your engineers, when you submit something, or you're first looking at something, you wanna box out the areas that you really can't go into. In that case, we're looking at wetlands, any easements, the setbacks, um, any restrictions that the state might have. And I, I honestly think we need to see that first to make a.
We have that, you, you wanna pull that?
Yeah, but, well, but the other thing is.
And then I have one more, come. Go ahead.
When, when, when the applicant bought the property, he knew the setbacks, if he did, did his diligence. He should have known the setbacks were, were, were what they are, two hundred feet, why now do we have to change that? I don't see us changing it.
Well, right now, it's not.
I'm only one opinion.
It's up to the zoning. He's going for variance.
We're, we're just a referral, but I.
I know, but why should we refer to the zoning board and say, I myself, only myself I'm talking about, approve that zoning change? Because he knew when he bought the property that the zone was two hundred feet or whatever it was. He should have known that, now he comes to us and asks us for the zoning variance, and I don't think we should give it to him.
So, we have an application in front of us, we have to look at the application, what's submitted. So our job here is to, one, they're seeking, the zoning board is seeking input from us. To, to even out of the box do that.
I just gave my opinion.
I, I hear ya, but to, to give a fair assessment of the property, we need to know what the restrictions are, and I honestly don't think we have that yet.
So, uh, Margaret's pulling, pulling it up, I, Margaret, you, you wanna go, go through it?
Um, sure.
Does that, now, Margaret, I meant to cut you off, but this drawing, and I'm sorry, my eyes are failing me a little bit, does that show the two hundred foot setback, or does that show the one hundred foot setback?
You gotta stand up to the microphone.
Sorry. How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good, good.
Um, so in here, we are showing two hundred foot setback from the residential district. So you basically end up with this fifty, maybe forty or fifty foot strip of where you could put a building. And you end up with this, also this yellow building envelope has a hundred foot setback from the property line and two hundred foot setback from the rear property line because that adjoins a residential district. There is a seventy-five foot setback or a hundred foot setback off of Navajo, but that is too thin for the side setback, so there's no building envelope. But you can, you know, obviously put your access road in this area. So the green is the hundred foot setback from the wetland buffer.
I don't mean to cut you off, but that front setback that we were just talking about, what does that show?
Seventy-five feet, that?
All right, so if it was two hundred feet.
It would be from the center line of the road.
Okay, so where would that line fit into this picture? I appreciate you working on the fly.
Yeah, with my little handy dandy calculator, okay. Estimating, it might push us seventy-five, like a hundred fifty, it may push us fifty feet farther in, which I could still accommodate the building and the turnarounds. But again, you would be pushing the access road further into the lot or further or closer to Route six. You know, we could look at, you know, if we wanna look at the alternative layout. So I actually, this building is a hundred and twelve, well, I think it's a hundred feet off of the front line. And to go two hundred feet off, it would push the building deeper into the lot. We would still have to accommodate the turnarounds and then access to the back of the lot for the parking.
If if the project works.
What?
If it works.
If it works.
If it works, right, so the the owners got certain things that they need to see. And when you start to box this out, if this setback ultimately is two hundred feet.
It would still work.
So that's why we need to see that, because to me, it looks like you're kinda pushing a lot into a property that might not be accommodating to what the development is, what they're looking for.
Your code allows for this, and this is actually the only lot that would allow for this based on this.
We're talking apples and oranges, we're not talking use.
Yeah.
We're talking boots on the ground land. So your wetlands have a setback, which boxes you out of that. Your property, you know, your setbacks for the building then box you out of certain areas. We need to see what that actually is. That's what I I need to see, and then you're asking us to make a determination of where it should be in the front or the back. I mean, you could also do an entrance onto Route six, right? So you're avoiding.
Well, DOT is not gonna approve that. They they would prefer us to already come on a road that, an entrance road that already exists.
Again, I think these are things we have to look at, right? So we know the use is permitted.
I understand that that we have to flesh out where the building is gonna be, where the driveways are going to be, where the parking is going to be. So the building envelope will accommodate the building.
We're not sure, because we're not sure where now this this, what this front yard setback actually is.
Right, so, hold on, let me see if I can do this. I don't know if we wanna talk about it.
In the meantime, we do have, we send something back to zoning.
I think we gotta ask the question about the the setback.
So.
I think we can answer.
Then we should tell them that.
I don't think, I don't necessarily feel that we're disagreeing, I just don't feel that we have enough information to make a decision.
Decision on.
What you prefer.
The setback from Route six.
Uh, but but well, what the referral right now is on the on the setback up top.
Right, which you basically, what's the percentage variance you're looking for?
Fifty.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent, which is a big variance, right?
Yes.
So if the if the building works in the front area, right? And you said you can get it to work in the front area, then you could avoid that variance. However, we don't, the discussion we're having today is the more we dig into this, the more questions we have. So now, there's a question of interpretation on the front variant, or the front setback. So and.
Nope.
We need, you know, we need to get that answered.
If it's two hundred feet from the center line of Route six, I can still accommodate the building in this location. It would just move a little bit north.
So.
Then they don't need the variance.
Then you don't need the variance.
I don't need a variance, right.
Then this is.
That puts the question back.
I'm sorry to disagree with you, but if you look at this picture right here that's on here, you see the two wetland buffers that are at the north part of the building?
Right.
As soon as you start to push that building north, the building has to squeeze.
Right.
So the building, only way it would work would be as a kind of a triangle or a trapezoid in those setbacks.
It has to squeeze because of what?
The wetland buffers.
But you you're, but your proposed layout has wetland buffer and wetland encroachments.
Yes.
So no matter what you do on the site, you're going to have impacts to wetlands and wetland buffers. So what I'm laying out here is that this board, I believe, in my opinion, has to find the best location of the building on the site, everything being equal, to minimize the impacts to all the parameters of the project as to the greatest extent that they can, before you can, I think, give the zoning board any sort of opinion on a on a variance for something that you haven't determined whether or not you think it should be there or not.
Right.
Well, if you hypothetically speaking, if you look right here, you see where the building's edge is, and it's right below the wetland buffers. Right, so if we have to move this back fifty, sixty feet, the building is gonna be in the wetland buffers. And it's gonna have a bigger, a way more impact on the wetland buffer than it will if it's up top, which has no impact on the wetland buffer whatsoever. So if you move this building down below and we do the two hundred foot setback, you're gonna have a lot larger disturbance in the wetland buffer than you would if you put the building up top. So yes, we can get it two hundred feet, but yes, it's gonna be way more in the wetlands than it was, than it will be if it moves up top.
And and again, that's what we're we're trying to get at, is 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 this, maybe it's too big, the building? Maybe it's gotta be, the project's gotta be scaled down, these are the things that we have to look at.
I understand.
And to do that appropriately and correctly, we need accurate and correct information.
Yeah.
That's why we need to see what that front yard setback would be. When we have that and we know that, then your engineer could work and tweak to see how they get it to work. But maybe maybe there's too much going on, I'm not sure.
The zoning is meeting at the end of this month, and we're not meeting yet, again until August.
Oh, that's right.
So why don't we send them a memo that.
We need these questions answered.
And ask them to postpone their decision until we work on our end.
Right.
And in the meantime, you could work with David to kinda take a look at that. Does that make sense?
Uh, it does, as long as David will 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 talk to me.
He won't talk to you?
No, I'm joking, I'm joking. We we did bring Mark all the way up from from Albany, so if 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 the board would allow.
I think we'd like to hear it.
Okay, good, thank you. So let me turn, let me let me move move on from citing to operational, regardless somewhat of of where it would be.
Yep.
What, how the operation would would go. So let me turn over to Mark, give you a little background of who he is, and go through the regulations.
Thank you.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Mark Millsbaugh with Sterling Environmental. We specialize in the permitting and design of solid waste management facilities. So can you close that? So regardless of where the building is located, the way this facility will be operated is trucks would enter off of Navajo. They would queue before the the scale. And I guess, can you move it up a little bit? So the the scale is that first structure on the entrance road. At that location, trucks get weighed in. Most solid waste management facilities, and I expect this one, would have an elevated camera that looks down on the truck so that you can see what's onboard. The customer at the facility would be checking in with any requisite paperwork. Construction debris to be transferred to a facility like this has to come from a project that's got a demolition permit. And local governments like yours issue demolition permits after there's demonstration that the asbestos has been dealt with. So debris in New York is fairly well defined. It's from buildings like this, residential structures, things of that nature. It does not include garbage, putrescible wastes, industrial waste, commercial waste, it's construction debris. The facility is also seeking permits for recyclables, which is what you put out in your garage in the recycling bin. So again, that's fairly well defined, controlled material. Truck comes in, gets looked at, paperwork gets observed, the driver gets a ticket, the billing transaction takes place, and the truck is directed to the building. At the building, if it's got debris onboard, it's gonna go in the bays that are identified for receiving construction debris. Same thing with recyclables, they'll go to the bay for recyclables. The new regulations under DEC's Part three sixty now require that new facilities, such as the one proposed here, have to be fully enclosed. So the unloading of trucks and the handling of the materials has to be under a roof within a building. Those those regulations are in effect now, and in order to obtain a state permit, we have to meet the standards that are in the Part three sixty regulations. So the material gets unloaded onto the floor. The personnel working on the floor are trained in recognizing the the types of waste that are being received, and more importantly, are trained to identify ways that are not accepted at the facility. If something happens to be commingled in the load, it gets called off, set aside, and the facility will have dumpsters to receive. I mean, if there's a bag of garbage mixed in with somebody's recyclables, I mean, it happens. People go out in the garage, they drop things in the wrong container. Those get called off and separately managed. Likewise with debris, you might get something that was in the building when it was demolished. That's not strictly construction debris, that would get called off and separately managed. The materials in in both material streams are are consolidated and and then loaded out for long haul transportation to either recycling facilities or disposal facilities. The building will have fire suppression system and ventilation to maintain a a safe working environment for the employees. The building will be equipped with door systems that quickly open and close, so truck can pull in, door can close, it can unload in the enclosure. And when when the truck is fully emptied, the the truck can leave. There'll be a tarping station so that the tarp can get pulled back on the incoming trucks. And there'll be, the tarping station can be used for the long haul vehicles that are leaving, to the extent that you're using dump trailers or open top trailers. That that's kind of the broad overview. Within the building, the the structure's gonna be tall enough to allow the truck to elevate and dump within the building. Uh, sure, Part three sixty has pretty detailed operational controls. It speaks to noise, there's operational standards during operating hours and during non-operating hours. The facility is required to do noise monitoring. And in almost all jurisdictions where these types of facilities are built, that the the results of those routine monitoring are provided to the New York State DEC and to local government. The employees are required to have specific training, both OSHA and waste-related training. That the, they need, for example, hazard recognition, if there was medical waste or something that showed up, you need to be worried about punctures from syringes, things like that. This type of facility should not be receiving anything like that. But if a if a if a doctor's office got torn down and there was something like that left behind, it could happen. The employee needs to be trained and and equipped to recognize that.
So if you go to Westchester County's facility in Yonkers with anything radioactive, it it triggers an alarm. You then have to dump that material and wait, right? So now they're making you take it away. But you have to have a contractor in place that's able to, from what I understand, then take that and remove it.
Usually what happens ninety-nine percent of the time is it sets the buzzer off, you park the truck, and come back the next day and does the buzzer off. Most of what it comes back is from chemotherapy patients.
Right.
So what happens is it's it's very high at one point, and then it dissipates over time, so then it can be dumped again. That's usually what has happened over the last couple of years with those loads.
You're not taking any regular garbage, this is would be commingled.
Yeah, it'd be, so on the recycling side, it'd be cardboard, paper, bottles, cans, and on the other side, it would be construction debris, wood, sheet rock, roofing, things like that. So that happens.
Clear definition in the building of the two uses.
Correct, so and you what you're saying about the radioactive stuff is more on the on the solid waste side, that happens pretty much regu, not regularly, but more. I don't think I've ever seen it happen on the construction debris side, it's only the solid waste side.
Right, with something get mixed up in the garbage like.
Odors, this type of facility does not handle putrescible waste, so odor's generally not an issue. Recyclables are not gonna stay around, they they are received. Some will be consolidated in the bales. You're gonna have a baler for corrugated, maybe for some plastics.
Is anything being proposed to be processed on the site?
Yeah, so the recycling side will be processed, that's why it's considered a recycling center.
What do you do, how does that work?
The way the process will come in through, usually it'll either be separate loads of cardboard, separate loads of commingled, or it could be what's considered single stream, where they're both mixed together. So there'll be two processes, either if it's already separated, cardboard or newspaper, it'll go straight into a baler, be baled, and then it will go out to the recycling facility from there where they will repurpose it. It comes in a single stream, it'll go through a sorting system where cardboard, newspapers pulled out, bottles and cans are pulled out, and bottles and cans are pulled out by tin cans, aluminum cans, glass, and then also the plastics, one through seven. So those will be separated out, those will be baled, and those will also be sent out to the recycling center. On the construction debris side, there will also be recycling pulled out, unpainted wood, concrete, any blacktop that can be recycled. Anything that we can find a market for will be recycled, there are places that will even recycle roofing. That's a little bit harder to get to right now, but there also are places that will recycle sheet rock. La Farge in Buchanan does have a process to recycle sheet rock. So any any market that we can come to to find that recycling, we will. New York State actually does have very high recycling goals, and on the construction debris side, it's actually not being met and probably will never be met, to be honest. But that's one of the things we're looking to do, which is why it's considered a recycling center and not a full-blown transportation, because we're gonna try to recycle as much as we can.
So when you say not a full-blown transfer, so if you get, you said asphalt.
Yep.
Are you taking, are you grinding that asphalt up?
No, so that'll be done at another facility, so that'll be put out into smaller containers or smaller trucks that will bring it to another facility where they will process that.
No grinding, there's there's no machinery there?
No, so the only machinery that'll be in there will be the process, so it'll be. So the only machinery that'll be in there will be the process, so it'll be, um, sections to separate out recycling. So it'll be more on the recycling side than the construction debris side. Most construction will be, construction debris will be handpicked, because it's a lot bigger pieces that will be cutting out. On the single, on the recycling side, that'll be more of a manual and an automated system, it'll be a combination of both. Um, and then that stuff will go into, the only real mechanical part will be baled. It'll be baled and it'll be tied, and that'll go into containers that will be shipped out, um, to wherever the markets are at the time. Some domestic, some international.
So on the site, you'll be taking construction debris of any type and recycling?
Correct.
No garbage, no organics, no leaf, wood chips, nothing like that?
No. I mean, obviously, there might be some incidental in the loads with the construction debris, but-
But it's mixed in.
But that is, like, like Mark said, they'll be trained to look at that and, and treat it as needed.
So let's say this building was scheduled to be torn down, and they're putting up a new town hall. So they would demo this, it would come to your facility, when it comes to your facility, the doors open very quickly, the truck backs in, dumps, boots on the ground and now pulling stuff out of that. There's machinery in there to kind of pull everything apart, and then inside that building, nothing outside, they're taking this material and separating it to containers.
Correct.
Those containers, it is sealed up and then pulled out somewhere else.
Correct.
So no one's taking any material outside and grinding up concrete or turning asphalt into milling, nothing of the sort?
No, everything will be done inside the building.
So at the same time this contractor's up taking this building down, La Scala could be taking his recycling from his home to your facility.
Correct.
Nothing's washed on-site, it, everything's just put into containers and shipped off.
Correct.
And everything's done inside.
Correct.
And the building itself is soundproof?
It's not.
Uh, but nothing is strictly soundproof, but the building is, is, the siding and areas that have, uh, insulation are, um, will, will deaden the sound. The, um, operating standard that applies, though, is monitoring needs to be conducted at the property line to demonstrate that the, uh, sound levels that are promulgated in Part 360 are not exceeded.
Who does that monitor?
Uh, firms like mine, um, you'll probably use somebody in the local market instead of, you know, somebody coming down from Albany, but, uh, uh, there's noise decimeters that won't measure the sound level, and it's, it's pretty standard fare, and that all has to be reported to the DEC. The new regulations also have, um, stepped-up reporting. You have to collect, uh, tracking documents on the incoming loads, which track the generator, the hauler, um, the nature of the material, and, uh, ultimately, there's places on the form for the ultimate disposition of the material. So that's all tracked and reported. It's, uh, also reconciled by the DEC when the tracking forms come in. They, they look at the, there's three levels of that form.
Do you have any estimate on how many trucks a day will come?
Uh, it's gonna be a function of the size of the vehicles.
And the size of the building.
And, and the size of the building. We haven't applied for permits yet, uh, the first order of-
Yeah, but you must have an idea of how many trucks.
Well, what were you seeking in terms of tonnage?
Well, we were seeking six hundred tons a day for construction debris and two hundred a da- tons a day for recycling. So again, it depends on the size of the trucks, what's in the trucks, how much they weigh, the composition of the material.
You gotta break down, how many, how many tr- trips a day do you think you're gonna get at the facility? Regardless, don't give me tonnage, give me trips a day.
Well, it varies. It varies, and we do have a traffic study that we have started, which we hopefully submit, we'll submit shortly, that will dictate all the information on that in regards to traffic.
Okay. So, let's say a truck comes from a construction site, it's filthy, it's got dirt all over it, is there a wash station here, or you just won't allow that?
So, the construction sites are subject to stormwater pollution prevention plans. They have to have, uh, the track-out pads at the construction site.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, uh, I, I'm sure you're, you as a board and your engineer deals with this all the time when you issue site plan approval. Um, the, the, um, uh, the pads and the, um, um, the gravel pads, the trucks use to exit the site, and any wheel wash takes care of that issue at the construction site.
Generally.
Generally.
You'd hope, but not always. The other thing, question I would have is like Yorktown, right? We put our recyclables out on the curb and they get picked up. Are you anticipating that those haulers would come to your facility, or where would you, where would the recycling come from?
So the recycling in Yorktown goes to the Westchester County facilities-
Right.
-because the town has a contract with Westchester County for that.
Right.
So it would be, yeah, it would be other municipalities that it would most likely come from, and commercial establishments too. So it could be commercial establishments in Yorktown, it could be commercial establishments in Westchester or in Putnam.
Commercial doesn't use the town?
Right.
Okay.
So going back to the question about the trucks, right, you said there are various sizes of trucks. So give me one size of a truck.
The most common truck that'll be coming would be a roll-off truck, so they have very, various sized containers from ten to forty yard containers would be coming in there.
So how much tonnage is in one of those ten to forty, a ten-yard container, how much tonnage?
About an average of one ton.
One ton. And we're looking at six hundred tons and two hundred tons, right? What'd you say it was?
Yep.
Okay, and then the, the forty-yard container, just to be fair, right, what, what, what's the tonnage in that?
Probably anywhere between sixteen and seventeen tons on average, I would say.
If you had a map of the area, let's say, uh, the various counties around, how many of these facilities exist?
So there's none in Putnam at all. There's one, two, three, there's three in Duchess. In Westchester, there's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, five, six, six.
So, you know, my question is, where you, where is the pull gonna be from? Is it gonna be from out of the area, is it more?
So in Westchester-
You're gonna get Putnam, you're gonna get Westchester, you're gonna get three counties.
So you're gonna get Westchester and Putnam mainly, is where you're gonna get the tonnage from. Um, so you're in Westchester, the closest one you have is in Elmsford and in, well, Somers slash Bedford, there's one in both Somers and Bedford. So the area that you'd most likely be pulling from is from Putnam, probably from halfway up Putnam, down, Med Pack Carmel, down, and Peak Skill, Cortland, Buchanan, Austin and Croton areas would all, that, that would be the normal flow of where it would go. Not saying that it wouldn't come from somewhere else, but that'd be the normal flow of where it would come from. That's all tracked too. Every load that comes in, like Mark said, we have to track the original destination of where it came from. One of the things that Mark, uh, also we, we talked about is just, you know, random inspections of loads too, not just, um, checking every load that comes in, we have to randomly inspect the loads and report that back to the DEC too. So they'll be looking for those reports as well.
Just refresh my memory, how much parking is provided here?
I think it was, I think it was around ninety total on the property.
And how many trucks can the building accommodate at once?
Uh, so there'll be five doors.
Five bays?
For access, five bays that trucks will be disposing into, so at the most, we would figure five at a time, um, but it'll most likely be, I would say, probably three on average, I would say, at the most. I don't think they'll really be five that often.
How many hours do we operation?
We were requesting six to six, but again, that's up to the DEC.
It's up to who?
The DEC. They are the ones that regulate tonnage and hours too, with your input as well.
Do they put a maximum timeframe on your hours?
Yes.
Is, is there a possibility that we could say, we don't want you to operate at six AM?
With the noise ordinance, would-
That would take over?
Right. Because what you're dealing with on a site like that, and probably one of the reasons they have such a large setback is again, when you have these trucks, they're regulated with the beepers, beep, 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 and that's going on-
All the time.
From the beginning of the day to the end. We've dealt with this on the Nestle app.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
We had to deal with that and the light, both which have become problematic.
Well, something that came to my mind as I was listening to this is when, when we have done all of our solar applications.
Yeah.
We had the Nicertas rules from New York State in hand, and we looked at them and we used them, but we don't have any access at this point. We do not have-
Well, just going on what this is.
The state stuff.
Well, we're not even at that point. We still, again, don't know whether, if and where the building could be cited.
I know, but I'm, I'm thinking of the impacts of this-
One of the good points you brought up is the light and the, and the noise, right, of the backup buzzers, which is why we think that depositioning is the better position. So I'm just gonna, it'll lead you through that, right? So trucks that are backing into this building, light will be facing the wetland property. So it will not be facing any residential building whatsoever. Noise also will be going into the building and also not facing any homes. Also, it, the noise, any noise that would be going into the building or past it hypothetically would be going into a commercial property. That's currently commercial, I understand, it could be residential in the future. But also, the homes that are up in Somers are north and they're above a hill. So those are one of the, the, one of the reasons why we believe with noise and light that this positioning is better as well.
Anybody have any further questions at this time?
I, I, my thing is, well, I wanna know how many trips a day are go- are gonna go back and forth to this facility, over Yorktown streets, and, and what kind of disturbance is that gonna be? If they have five doors, and you figure four of the doors are working every five minutes, figure out how many times that doors are gonna open, which means trips in and out.
Yeah.
That's, that's double, double, double whatever the estimate is.
Yes, we, Kim Lee Horn has been retained to, to perform a, a traffic study for this, for the site, which we're gonna be submitting, eh, soon, shortly, um, so, um, they did, they did, uh, uh, collect traffic counts already, and then, or now we're just putting their, putting their report together. So we should have that to you soon. I think also just the, the, I think we, we did submit the Part 360 regulations as part of Mark's, uh, letter, was, it was a, a appendix to his letter, which just lays out the, the new regulations.
All right, maybe it's not in this, today's materials.
Okay, all right. And I'm, I'm happy to, we could, we could provide it again, it's, I'm not saying, I mean, there was a lot in there, so it's-
Yeah, I know.
Let me ask you another question. We, we were gonna go visit, there was a Somers site or something. Did we get that set up yet?
No.
No.
But I've been there many times over the years, many, many ti- and nobody ever asked me for a demolition permit, believe me. Not that I would've gave it to them.
One of the things that I, I've recommended till last time is that you should see other facilities as well that are more com- up-to-date with the 360 regulations. The facility in Elmsford, which is on the up-to-date facility, um, with the 360 regulations, is more of what our facility would look like. So, you know, I think if you're gonna visit the Somers facility, you should also avail it, visit the, uh, Westchester Recycling Facility in Elmsford, that'll give you a better understanding of what a, a more up-to-date facility would look like.
Brookfield. So let's go there. Well-
That facility's only constructed, I wanna say, three years ago, right now, the, the one in Elmsford.
See, you're right.
Yeah.
All right. Have we answered the, the issue on the table with the zoning board?
I, I think so.
No, we need more answers. Right, so are, are, are we clear into what, what questions we're asking for answers on? I, I think we'll close this.
Sure we are.
I think so. At least for now. But I think we have a legal question.
But we still gotta tell the zoning board that we, we're not gonna act on their request.
We don't have a recommendation.
We don't have a recommendation. Exactly, right. Because we need more information.
We need more information.
Is that fair?
That's fair, I, I, but I think it was a good suggestion is to let us know what other, I mean, besides the traffic, we heard, we heard that, and the traffic report's coming, what other information do you think you, you would like?
What, what you're seeing, and you see the people sitting out in the audience now, which I'm sure are all in residences around that area, the biggest concern is impact, right? I think you heard Mr. La Scala-
Correct.
-that the loads, the trips, how much, you need detail. The onsite, right? So we know, and we've had, we got burnt before, I'll be honest with you, on another application with light and noise.
Mm-hmm.
Right? You could pull the buil- the, inside the building, when you're banging the gates and doing all that, it might be quiet, but outside, this constant movement of traffic, and when you have those types of trucks, there's a lot of noise, especially with the backup alarms. And similar to the, uh, solar, was discussed earlier, is no one's gonna wanna see this, right? We know that. It's, it's a, right? It's a existing use that's allowed there. However, you've got residents, you've got proposed development behind, you've got a neighbor next door that at some point could put in the development, this new development across the street.
Of course.
So it's all about impacts. That being said, and again, I don't wanna be pigeonholed to that, because I'm sure as we go through this, more things will come up, but I think the first question we have to answer or get answered is, are these setbacks to see that envelope.
Oh, well, it's, uh, that's, that's the twentieth, right? There, there is a site, site walk with the, with the zoning board on the twentieth, if you wanna come, but you guys have already been to the site, right?
We did a site walk, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so why don't you guys work together to kinda get that moving?
Mm-hmm.
In the meantime, you can get us whatever information you have. We appreciate you coming down. Um, I'm sure we'll have more questions for you. Um, but at this point, let's try to get that first set of answers, questions answered.
If, if, if there are more questions from Mark, let us know, because we, we don't, we don't bring them with him every time, because it, you know.
I'm sure they could be done via an email or something along those lines.
Okay.
Missing anything at this time?
No.
Good?
Thanks.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much. All right. Last but not least, what I do with my agenda. We have the, uh, referral by the Town Board amending Chapter 300 zoning, proposal amending Chapter 300 of the Code of Downey Yorktown entitled "Zoning to Allow Pet Care Facilities" in the C3, C4, and OB zoning digits. Sergio, are you gonna get up and present?
Oh, no, I mean, I think, I think it's pretty much self-explanatory, we've been around the block already with this.
I think we'd like you to get up there and present.
Wait.
Yeah, right.
C3, C4, and OB?
Oh, we have the zoning map right in the back, I should've grabbed that before.
What's the, uh, what's the zone for the, uh, proposal that we just saw?
C3.
C3?
Yep.
Okay.
John, I'm sure you had input in your, your department, but just-
I mean, I read the law.
Anything we need to be concerned with, or?
I, I, I think, I think it's fairly simple law and straightforward. It, it's requiring, you know, all the things that you would expect, you have to take care of the waste, you have to take, you gotta be with the dogs when they're out there, you can't leave them out there.
Right.
You have to have enough people, you have to have enough people inside.
Noise is dealt with.
Noise is dealt with. In certain instances, there may be allowed, uh, overnight boarding, but in specific instances, uh, I don't think this site that you saw tonight will rise to that, so, so it's pretty straightforward. The noise, um, is handled that, uh, if it's in a, a building with other tenants, you may have to provide appropriate noise attenuation, so it doesn't get into DBA levels or anything quite yet, so Sergio had some questions about that, but.
That was one of my main concerns on it.
The only other concern I had is that it completely excludes medical care, and I, I'm not sure if, it might be a requirement, or if something happens to an animal, they can deal with it there without having to be trained in it or something, I don't know. Uh, but I, it's, it's not a planning issue.
To have medical staff on-
I don't know.
On site?
No, no, I'm not saying they need to do that, I'm just saying, if they gotta produce a first aid or something, they should be able, maybe they can just do it. But I have no other planning issues with this, I thought it was well-written.
Yeah, yeah, we went over it quite a bit.
Yeah, I think it accomplishes all the things we would-
Want.
Normally want to see.
And these things are, they seem to be coming fast and furious.
I worked, I worked in a grooming shop for five years, on a road in the Bronx.
Oh, my old neighborhood.
And, uh, the, the issues that you have are pet waste for the walking areas, and that seems to be-
It's covered.
Seems to be covered.
Yeah.
Proximity to people bringing pets in and out. Proximity to people bringing pets in and out. If there's other customers, if there's other people that are going to interact, some pets don't like going into pet shops.
Yeah.
And as a rule, that's really, and if you have any kind of boarding or pets that for some reason have to stay overnight, there has to be somebody on-site. Their proximity to residents, if noise becomes an issue, there's something that's important. And waste, but it's all fur.
It seems like it's all covered.
I think they covered it.
So we'll mention those things that you're concerned with, but they, if I got it right, they appear to be handled in the regulations, so you have no further planning objections, right? Is that a summary?
Yeah.
They usually make good neighbors.
Yeah. Cemetery. All right, so I have a motion to close the meeting.
Motion.
All's in favor. Aye. Motion buried. Have a good night. Yorktown?